I'd like to welcome everybody to the meeting of the Garden City Zoning Board of Appeals. It's Wednesday, April 24th, 2024, at 6:32. We'll call the meeting to order, and our first order of business is pledge allegiance to the flag if everyone would stand, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all. Thank you. Would the secretary take the roll call, please?
Chairperson May?
Here.
Commissioner Price?
Here.
Mr. Richard?
President.
Commissioner Hickman?
President.
Commissioner Smith?
Here.
Commissioner Martin?
Here.
Commissioner Bullock? The quorum of six.
Okay, the next order is approval of the agenda. If someone cares to make a motion.
Motion to approve. Second.
Motion to approve the agenda and support. Any comments or questions on the motion? Take the roll, please.
Commissioner Martin?
Aye.
Commissioner Hickman?
Aye.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Richard?
Aye.
Commissioner Price?
Aye.
Chairperson May?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Next, we have approval of the minutes from the regular meeting of February 28th, 2024.
I make a motion to approve the minutes from February 28th, 2024.
Motion's made and seconded. Any corrections or comments? Hearing none, take the roll, please.
Commissioner Hickman?
Aye.
Commissioner Price?
Yeah.
Commissioner Martin?
Aye.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Richard?
Aye.
Chairperson May?
Aye.
Motion passes 6-0.
Okay, the next item is public comment on non-agenda items only. If there's someone here who wishes to speak on a non-agenda item, this could be their opportunity to stand and come up to the podium. Being no one, we'll move on to the business items. Our first item is about the northeast corner of Arcola Avenue and Cherry Hill Road. It's consideration for of a request for four-dimensional variances for the construction of a new apartment building on the vacant lot at that location. To start us off, could we hear from Mr. Ortega?
Yes. Good evening, everyone. As mentioned, this is a consideration for a piece of property located at the northeast corner of Arcola Avenue and Cherry Hill Road. The site is an unimproved vacant lot. It's approximately 18,000 square feet in area, and the applicant is proposing to construct an eight-unit, two-story apartment building along with associated parking on the site. So at the March 14th, 2024 Planning Commission meeting, the applicant was granted site plan approval for the project contingent upon the applicant receiving dimensional variances from four specific zoning ordinance standards. Those standards are, first, related to the minimum required floor area requirement. Based on the site's 18,000-square-foot lot area, the site is permitted by ordinance to have seven dwelling units. The applicant is requesting a variance from the standard to allow for eight dwelling units. They also have a variance request from the minimum required side yard setback. The schedule of regulations requires a 20-foot side yard setback with a front yard on Cherry Hill, a front yard on Arcola, and a rear yard on the northern property line. They're requesting a three-foot variance and allowing the building to be 17 feet from the side yard lot line that's located on the east side. So that that property line on the east side shared with Wendy's is considered a side yard. So there are three-foot variance, allowing it to be 17 feet from there. They're also requesting a variance from the parking lot location requirements. Based on the zoning ordinance does not permit off-street parking in the required front yard, and based on the applicant's proposed prefer and preferred configuration, they're they would like to locate the parking lot within the 30-foot Arcola Avenue front yard location. And then finally, the fourth variance is related to the dumpster location as well. Similarly, these ordinance requires that no dumpster shall extend closer to the front lot line than any portion of the principal structure. The proposed location is between the front of the building and the Arcola Avenue front lot line, so therefore, they're requiring a variance from the standard and allowing the dumpster enclosure to be located in that position. When we look at these variances, we look at the various different standards of approval within the zoning ordinance. The first one, and with regards to this, is practical difficulty, and that's basically determining if compliance with these specific standards and the strict letter of the of these standards is would either unreasonably prevent the use of the property, or if complying with all these standards would conform and conform with them, would such conformance be unnecessarily burdensome upon the applicant. So looking at the first issue, the minimum required floor area and having eight apartments instead of seven, you know, compliance with this standard really would not prevent the site from being used for permitted apartment use. The applicant could still comply with the ordinance. They would just be having seven apartments instead of eight. So it's not, compliance would not prevent the use of the site for multifamily. It would just provide it in a different capacity, different number. When looking at the full compliance with the setback and the parking location standards, whether that would create a practical difficulty or not, you know, compliance with the setbacks in full would result in a building envelope where the that is closer to the center of the site. Based on the applicant's proposed and preferred configuration, they feel that the they would not, if the building wasn't to comply with all the setback standards, be located in the required building envelope, there would not be enough location for a parking lot to the rear or side of the building based on their proposed standards as they presented it. And this is similar, so that's for the reasoning for their reasoning for putting the building 17 feet from the east property line and then choosing to put the parking lot between the building and the Arcola Avenue right away, so therefore, in the front yard of Arcola Avenue. And this is based on needing a building and needing a parking lot for eight dwelling units. So when you're looking at a building for eight dwelling units, having the parking lot located to the rear of the building would be tight. The dimensions of that for eight parking units and the number of parking spaces required would be tight, and based on their proposal, they feel that's not, it would be would be burdensome for them to actually comply with that. Then finally, looking at the dumpster enclosure location and whether they can comply with that or not, their, once again, their proposal is to place it between the building and Arcola Avenue. That's the front yard, and they feel that's the only location it could be located, and any other location would be a burden. And I believe that the building, parking dumpster, excuse me, the dumpster enclosure has the potential to be located north of the building, between the building and the northern property line, behind the front lot line. And the only issue with that would be that the site would then have to require additional asphalt and parking parking lot area to allow for a dumpster to drive further north into the site and then turn to access the dumpster location. They feel that that additional, based on their proposal, I'm making the interpretation that they think that that having that additional parking lot area is a burden on them. That's why they prefer to have it in its configuration, because then the parking lot would be smaller size and the dumpster dump truck would not have to drive further into the site. So based on their configuration, that's a burdensome situation. Looking at other criteria, you know, you have my review letter. I won't go over everyone individually, but some of the ones I just wanted to point out, whether there's extraordinary circumstances. The site actually does have a slight extraordinary circumstance, because the property is somewhat unique in the fact that, doing research, I found out that this lot was actually not located within a platted subdivision. It's actually located, it's an, it's a, it's part of an unplatted piece of property that was never incorporated into a subdivision. If it was incorporated into a subdivision, it would have been, had the benefit of being reconfigured to a standard lot size and depth that's normally found further north on Arcola. A good example of this would be the the property located at Maplewood in Inxter, the Santu Funeral Home and the property around there. That property at the northwest corner of Maplewood and Inxter is actually unplatted property. It's completely, it's a different situation, because it's much larger and the lots are larger there. They're unplanted parcels, and it's, in this configure, in this location at Inxter and Cherry Hill, it's slightly different, because it's much smaller. So it's a, it's a minor extraordinary circumstance. I mean, other, other pieces of property have been developed that way, but it's a minor situation. One other thing, then, looking at the, just pointing out about the neighborhood character standard and whether the granting of the variance or appeal, if this would, if these variances were granted, would the, would the neighborhood character be altered, or would that essential character remain? You know, the granting of the requested variance, we don't think really actually altered the character of the neighborhood, because adjacent properties to east, west, and south are zoned and developed for commercial already. Property to the north is actually zoned and developed for multifamily as well. Now, there are single-family homes to the northwest of the site, but the majority of the property adjacent to the site is actually very intent, more intense in nature. It's multifamily, it's commercial. So if this site were to be developed in some way as multifamily, it would be similar in character to the adjacent property, especially given the fact that Cherry Hill Road is a very highly-traveled, high-volume arterial corridor, and the Inxter Road and Cherry Hill intersection is a major intersection in the city. So if this were to be developed in some fashion as a multifamily, I don't think it would alter the character of the area. So there are other criteria that are kind of similar to that, you know, whether there's impact on adjacent properties, the relationship to adjacent land uses, that's kind of a similar consideration, I think. The fact that if this were to develop in some way as a multifamily use, would that alter the character or the or negatively impact adjacent property or change that relationship? I really don't feel this, having this developed as multifamily as well seems consistent. How that's developed, where the parking is located, where the dumpster is located, and that, and where the, whether the number of units on the site, you know, you would have to come to that determination based on this criteria. So in the end, as I mentioned, the zoning board for appeals can only grant a variance from these requirements, making, after you make a determination, that the approval criteria have been substantially met for each, for each individual variance. In order to help you with this determination, we've just presented some of these criteria in my review letter. I've just pointed them out briefly verbally for you, and I can answer any questions at that, at the appropriate time to go over any other criteria for the approval. Procedurally, just to let you know, in front of you are some sample motions to approve or deny each individual variance. While you can discuss them collectively, it would probably be best to make motions for each requested variance individually at the appropriate time, after hearing public comment and deliberating on this issue. With that, I'll take any questions.
Okay, well, why don't we hold our questions and comments till later and hear from the applicant now? Did you care to make a statement?
My name is Lee Love. Do you want me to say the address?
Pardon me, I couldn't hear you.
You want me to say the address, my address?
No, you can just tell us who you are and your relationship to the property owner?
Yeah, I'm representing the property owner. I'm the designer of the site.
Okay.
And thank you so much, Mr. Ortega, for presenting this. I believe he, he mentioned everything. He clarified everything that we're doing. So we, here today, we have four variances, as you know. So I'm gonna go through each one just to explain something. I know he explained everything. I'm just gonna do the same thing. So for A, minimum required floor plan, so the zone, for the zoning, we're required to have seven units, and we're doing eight. The reason we're doing eight is to have more options to the future renters. We have four one-bedrooms, four two-bedrooms, and how the building will look like, it's gonna look more complete. And for B, minimum required side yard setback, as Mr. Mario mentioned before, so if we, if we follow the requirement, which is we to have the parking in the back of the building and move the building to the front to Arcola side, we will lose, we will lose parking spots. Even if we do, if we go to the point number C about the setback requirement, if we move the building to Arcola side three feet, which is to remove this variance, we will lose around three to five parking spots from the site, because we're doing the parking to the minimum. This is how the site can fit. This is the max it can fit. And for the dumpster, number, letter D, we figured that if we wanted, if we do it between the building and Arcola side, it's gonna be easy access in and out to the truck to come take, remove the dumpster and leave, and add more easy access for the future renters. And yeah, that's it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Well, now I'd like to open the public hearing. Is there, if we have any questions, we can respond to them later if you'd like to have a seat. If there's someone here who wishes to speak on this item, you can come forward now and introduce yourself and.
Hi, my name is Beverly McCarson. Do I need to fill this out?
Well, yeah, you need to fill out that sheet, but you can do that.
Okay. So I was here in 2022 for the same meeting, for the same builder, and it was denied. Apparently, it were a setback, but I have the same issues as I had last time. It was, one, the no exit or entrances on Arcola. We already have excess amount of parking from the other units that are on Arcola. We have a duplex across the street, and then I think it's three, six, nine, a 12-unit apartment complex just north of that unit or duplex. We already have an abundance of people parking in the street. It's not easy access in and out for the garbage collector. I hate to say that. I've witnessed it. He's, he's ran into the building. Snow days, people park in the street. They don't move their cars. We end up with bumpy roads, ice-filled. Let me see what else. And really, I don't want to have to look as at a resident as looking at a parking lot. I already look at a parking lot with everybody else that's parking in the street. We also have Akron in the corner, which would be across the street from the property he's wanting to purchase or build on, and they also park in the street. So we, and another thing is traffic. People are cutting down the side streets to avoid that light at Cherry Hill and Inxter. So I, I'm highly against all of this. I just don't think it's a good fit for our city on that corner there. I don't know, you guys have anything to say?
Ma'am, just address the.
I have a letter from a neighbor. She was unable to make it. She's 86 years old, so I don't know if you want to see that.
Well, you can, you can give that to the secretary.
Okay. I don't know what one's the secretary. And this is her envelope, so.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else that wishes to speak on this? Come forward, please.
I have a question for her.
Okay. Ma'am, we have one question for you.
Yeah, you stated that you, you lived in that area. Where in proximity to this proposed property are you?
Just kitty corner. I'm right directly near the duplex, right across the street from us.
Uh huh.
And so.
So you would be the house to the north at 160?
165.
165?
You're what, second or third house down?
Third.
Third down south.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, sorry, you can come up now.
Hello.
Hi, would you introduce yourself and tell us where you live?
LaShawna Newman on Arcola, fifth house off the block. As she stated, the traffic, my son can't even ride his bike in the front, because they're speed speeding all day up and down the street. As she said, the parking, it took us a time just to get out the driveway today to get up here, because of the cars parked on the street. Dude, I'm directly across from the apartments, I guess. There's been a car parked on the street for maybe a couple of weeks, hasn't moved. They park in front of the driveway. It's just, it's just a lot already. So to bring another apartment with eight units, two bedrooms, that's what, 17, 20 parking spots? There's no room for it, but.
I also have pictures of what we currently deal with, with the field trash, the car parked on the street, how they're parked in front of her house.
Okay, well.
Directly in front of the driveway.
We can't really, I don't think we can look at your cell phone pictures, but I think you've explained it to us already, so. Did you have anything else, ma'am?
No, basically, everything she said, and just the speeding, the shortcut, the dump, the dump truck, but that's it.
Okay, thank you. Sir, did you have anything you wanted to add, or?
Basically, some of those.
Okay. Does anyone else wish to speak at the public hearing concerning this item? Okay, then we'll move on. Would you like to read the communication for us?
Yep. This says, "My name is Mary Chambers, and I live at 181 Arcola in Garden City. I'm 87 years old and cannot attend the meeting. I have difficulty walking. I've lived here 56 years and am very concerned about the vacant lot being proposed for apartments in the field at Cherry Hill and Arcola. We have a lot of traffic on this street, avoiding lights at Cherry Hill and Inxter. Also, we have apartments across the street where people who live there do not utilize parking available to them in the back. I'm concerned that they will, there will not be enough parking and more traffic, and I have grandchildren already that I will not allow in the front due to all of this ongoing traffic. I would rather look at an empty field than have this hazardous condition. Plus, I believe it will bring down the value of my home, as we already have empty duplex across the street that is not maintained, and the city doesn't care about the owner. It's empty as we speak. Please prevent this from happening. Please allow my neighbor, Beverly McCarson, to read for my absence." And then again, signed, Mary Chambers.
Okay, thank you. Did you have any other communications?
We did receive one prior to the meeting. This is another resident, Felicia Townsend on Arcola. "I'm writing in regards to the lot located on Arcola and Cherry Hill. It's my understanding that the owner wants to build a 14-unit apartment complex with the entrance to the parking lot on Arcola. My home is located directly from the lot, directly across from the lot, and I'm concerned with traffic and parking. There's already Akron tires, as well as another, as well as the other apartments already on Arcola, which has a lot of traffic. I am requesting that any entrance to and from the property be made from Cherry Hill and not Arcola." She did provide her phone number and said, "Thank you in advance for your consideration."
Okay.
151 Arcola.
Were there any other communications?
There were not.
Okay, thank you. Well, hearing no other written communications, we'll close the public hearing and move on to CBA member discussion. To start off, I'd like to say that, first, I think this basically is a self-created problem, because the owner of the property bought the property and then requested to have it rezoned for multiple family, so he was well aware of the size and nature of the property when he did that. And he's disregarding several of our ordinance requirements in doing this, some of which I think could be easily taken care of. The, the parking issue, for instance, the parking lot in the front, which is prohibited by moving the building forward, you currently, on your plan, have 55 feet of space on the Arcola side of the building and 17 feet of proposed space on the backside of the building. If you just flipped those two figures and put the 55 feet in the back, you'd have the same amount of parking in the back as you currently are proposing in the front. We would, personally, I would, I would be more interested in looking at giving you a variance from the front setback to allow this situation, because this would also allow you to put the dumpster location at the back of the property in the corner. You could have a, an entry drive for the parking lot at the north end of the building, because there's currently quite a bit of room there, and it would be a straight shot back to where the dumpster could be located. The, the whole issue with the parking and everything is basically self-created, which is, in my view, prohibited from receiving a variance because of that fact. So this is, this is my feeling about it. I think, I think it could be changed to allow just a couple of variances regarding the setbacks and take care of the, the two major problems, which is the parking and the dumpster. So that's how I feel about it. How does everyone else feel about it? Morgan? Morgan?
I agree with that also, because that was my idea when I first walked in here and been looking at it, essentially got this plan and everything, and I just don't understand why the, you know, people that designed this didn't think of that in the first place because this is more of a hindrance to the neighborhood and more of a, oh, help me out part of the thing for them. When they can move this building ten feet towards Arcola and put everything in the back, they need to get the variance off the front. And then you would have the dumpsters, because I've, I've lived in a parking place before with dumpsters, and trust me, they aren't the prettiest things in the world to see. You sure as heck don't want to see them in the front. The neighbors got to look at that stuff. So if you pull this building forward and you put everything in the back, and you put your dumpsters to the north back, it says, you go straight in there, pull it out, pull it back, put the driveway on Cherry Hill, that will not impede on Arcola whatsoever. And people have no option, you know, and they'll help to alleviate the problem with Arcola. I mean, I understand, the property we want to fill up and, you know, make our, and say look good, but it doesn't look good if it's inconvenient for the people. We have to live there, and I think it should be conducive for the people to plan stuff and make it for the people that live here also. That's just my opinion. Thank you.
Anyone else? Yes, Tony?
Go ahead.
Go ahead.
I just say, I concur with the opinions. Uh, it does sound like a very good idea to move that building. Uh, it would take care of a lot of problems all at once. Uh, the rest, I guess, still have to be worked on with minimum square feet and as far as that goes, but the other ones, it seems it could all be taken care of with that, that simple change. That's, that's what I had.
Yes.
Can I go ahead and give a rundown of the wall?
Yeah, sure.
I have to agree with everybody up here so far on what's been said. Um, at our first meeting, there was an issue about fire hazard, and we were concerned about that being a set, setback. Now we're hearing setback is due to parking. Next time, it might be the setback is due to a playground or whatever the owner decides to change to. Last time that we met, we asked about the owner. Owner's still not here. It, it would have been nice to see them. I know you represent the owner, but to show interest in our community and to show interest in the project, to, even if you were to speak for them, it'd be nice to see them here. The required floor, uh, floor space, you quoted that, or you stated it was for aesthetics, that it, it's more appealing. And it, I get that. It, it would be appealing, but you could also make four and three instead of four and four without the variance. So you lose one room, you still keep your square building, because square buildings are a whole lot cheaper to build than a cantilevered building. So that I get on a designer aspect, coming from an architect, I get why you'd want to keep it a perfect rectangle. But to me, that's not a burden on the city. The owner knew that buying that property, the owner knew that going into, into design, and it's not a burden from the property. It's a burden the owner created because they want more money. They want the extra unit. We can't help that. Excuse me. Uh, the parking, again, we could make the building smaller, and to me, it's a greed thing. It's not, I want to beautify the city, I want to get as much out of this land as I can, which anybody rightfully should. He purchased property for a reason. They want, they want to invest into it. We can make it smaller and alleviate these problems, but instead of doing that, you're asking the city to change their way of viewing and change what we have in writing to accommodate them. If it was an existing building, it'd be one thing. We had a meeting last month, and neighbors showed up, they spoke. All of us were kind of against giving the, um, the variance on it. The landowner that lived right next door spoke on it, said, "You know what? I can deal with this if you can," because there was an existing building. This is a clean slate. You can do whatever you want. You're not fighting a building that's already pre-existing twenty feet in front of you. You're not, there's nothing there to stop you from building any kind of design. So, and in my eyes, every one of these is a burden brought on by ownership, not by the property. And it, as Mr. Ortega said, that with other properties, because of the way it was deoted, the way it was wrote on the plats back then, that's one thing, but the owner, doing due diligence, should have known this, coming into it, and should have known, okay, these are hurdles I'm going to have to come across. And I just hope that if we, if we see this come up again, it's not another four set of things that, it's a whole new idea. It's not just, hey, let us help you. It's, well, now we're going to go with this, until he finally, or she finally thinks that they're going to get their way. We need to come together and find something that works best for the ownership, best for the residents, best for the city moving forward. Thank you.
Anyone else care to comment?
Yeah, I mean, on the site plan, which is the only thing that you gave us here, you're pretty accurate on your measurements. Seventeen feet, quarter inch. Now, on the site plan, you have this building being twenty-eight feet wide, and when you get into the floor plans, you've got that thirty-five point eight. So, I mean, that seven feet, we're working in such a tight area, that seven feet's kind of a big deal.
Do we have architectural, or do we have a mix of engineering and architectural fronts?
Oh, these are architectural.
R?
These are. They're from AK Architecture LLC. He's got a stamp on it. And we have, we have a parking lot design on here, four dimensions. That would also be part of the site plan, the detective measure, it's there. But the only thing we got more of here, on A2, on the floor plan, you've got it at thirty-five feet, eight inches in the entire building. The site plan, it's only like seven feet, eight inches thick. And I agree with what everybody has said so far. I consider that the, the four items we're dealing with are basically self-inflicted. Because I don't know why they say you can't change something in a perfect rectangle, you can't just switch it around.
Well, I think, uh...
Also, that would eliminate that driveway off of Arcola. No one to stipulate that, that it wouldn't, wouldn't be there if they changed that, moved it up, moved the driveway and everything to the back off Cherry Hill. Residents won't have to deal with any in and out traffic coming from on and off of Arcola.
That would eliminate more, but...
I know sometimes people make these apartments or make buildings, and they get one...
We, we might, there, there could be a, there could be a restriction there because of the Wendy's driveway being so close to the lot line there. I think, if I'm not mistaken, aren't you, don't you have to have twenty-five feet between the driv...
Yeah, that, that would be an issue, number one. Uh, Cherry Hill is a Oakland, is a Wayne County road, so they'll need permission from Wayne County, and the Wayne County standards are pretty rigid in that they do want, I believe, at the minimum of twenty-five feet between driveway access points. And so then the issue would be, especially giving that, that close to the intersection of, uh, Inkster and Cherry Hill. Uh, but that's not to say that, I mean, yeah, I mean, I, I don't, the main factor would be the, the existing Wendy's drive, and especially since that's a drive-through, uh, exiting traffic volume out of there is probably pretty high. So that's, it would probably be pretty, pretty difficult. However, there's still an opportunity to have a driveway off of Arcola further north to, to the north end of the building. Yeah.
Yeah, but I wonder, too, moving that building forward, basically in front of the sidewalk, is that going to make people more inclined to park on Arcola?
That, that I...
Well, they would still have the required number of parking spots in the back.
Yeah, but people can't get out this driveway. Are they going to want to just go park on Arcola, which the building's right there? All the way across the grass?
Why wouldn't, why wouldn't they be able to get out?
Well, you can't, I mean, you're not going to, like you said, it's going to be hard to make a right turn off Cherry Hill.
Well, that's what I'm saying, the drive off, off of Arcola would, would take care of that. But we're not here to design a new building for them. We're just here to deal with their variance request. So do we have, I mean, do we have a recommendation? And, yes, Brian?
Commissioner Smith, can you move your mic a little bit angled towards you? It's giving some feedback downstairs.
We need to have motions, and as they, as Mr. Ortega said before, they, they would like the motions to be made individually for each variance request, and they gave us some sample motions here to, to go by.
And with each motion, you should cite one of the reasons, some of your reasoning for deny, either approving them or denying them. Uh, there's four spaces listed, but you're not beholden to four, more or less. You can have more. More is always better. Uh, if you have less, it's your choice, but, but yeah, more. And based on the, the fourteen different criteria you have to choose from in the, from One other aspect, excuse me, I'm sorry to interrupt.
Go ahead.
Uh, just to make everyone aware that when a zoning ordinance, no, ordinance, excuse me, when a variance is recommended and denied, an applicant can't come back to request that same variance for one year. They can come back and try again for other variances, but they could not come back for any variances that are officially denied tonight. For example, if the applicant did want to come back in the future immediately, or, excuse me, not immediate, but in the short term, within one year, for the front yard variance for, as a proposal, to flip the building and have, because if the building was seventeen feet from Arcola, that requires a thirteen-foot front yard variance, that could be requested within the one-year timeframe. If they wanted to try again for a side year, side yard, the parking, or any, any other variances denied, they'd have to wait one year to request that.
Yes, sir, did you have a comment? Oh, okay. I thought you were raising your hand. Well, do we have, do we have a consensus to make a recommendation on the, if someone would care to make a motion, we'd start out with the minimum required floor area?
I would like to make a motion to deny the variance for the minimum required floor Make motion to deny parcel 35015010051001, located at northeast corner of Cherry Hill Road in Arcola, request a variance from the city of Garden City, zoning ordinance, appendix A footnote G, minimum lot area standard, variance is denied based on zoning board. Appeals have made a determination that the site does not meet the approval criteria, section 154, 453A specifically. I find the following criteria have not been met. Practical difficulty, as in, the burden has not been placed by the property itself, but rather by design of ownership and design.
Well, I think, yeah, according to the language in the ordinance, if we, we could say that the conditions are self-created and therefore cannot be allowed to have a variance. And we could also say that does not prevent, provide substantial justice for other apartment complexes in the city that have followed this rule. If you wish to add. Okay, is there support?
Support.
Any comments to, or corrections on the motion? Hearing none, take the roll, please.
Mr. Richard?
Aye.
Mr. Martin?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Hickman?
Aye.
Mr. Price?
Aye.
Chairperson May?
Aye.
Your motion of the denial, the variance passes six.
Okay, second, minimum required side yard setback. This is for the side yard on the east side of the building. So if, if that was changed to flip the parking lot, that could still be brought back in a relatively short time because it's a different variance. Is that correct?
Uh, forgive me, which?
Well, we're talking about the minimum side yard setback for the east side of the building. Uh, allowing seventeen feet. If that, if the parking lot was flipped, then there would be plenty of setback in the back because we'd have fifty-five feet there, and the seventeen feet would be on the Arcola side.
That is correct. Yep.
Which would be a different variance.
Right, because there is no setback for, standard for the parking lot from the property line. The parking lot could be located up to the par, property line.
Yeah.
Well, the masonry wall that's on, going to be on the property line, but...
Okay, does someone wish to make a motion for the, for variance request B?
Now, you're talking about the twenty-foot.
I'm talking, the one that says, "Minimum required side yard setback in the R3 district requires a twenty-foot side yard setback, and the applicant is proposing a seventeen-foot setback requiring a three-foot variance." So, not allowing any of the others would kind of eliminate this one, too, I guess.
And that, that's a self-created problem as well.
It is self-created because of the position of the building.
As I say, how do we get the position of the building if we want to go, let's park in the front, put it in the back?
Well, then, the position of the building would be moved towards Arcola.
Right.
But they would have to come back with a new design. We can't design it for them.
No, we're not designing it.
So we're just denying that variance.
If I may, if this gets denied today, if I understood correctly, they cannot come back with the side variance for one year from today, correct?
That's correct. For a side yard variance from that east property line along Wendy's.
I believe last time we spoke, we were kind of okay with that, as long as we had fire department, everybody saying that it was safe. I don't think we have a, a huge issue with the east side. Is there anything, whether it's tabled or we don't vote on this? Because I would hate to see them redesign the whole plan and come up with something over three feet and have to wait a year on that, if it takes six months to design.
If they, if they come back with a different variance request, that would be allowed. They wouldn't have to wait a year.
But if it's from the east side, they couldn't, so if...
They wouldn't need it if they flipped the parking lot.
Right, but if they keep it where it is, and I...
We have the other problems left, then, too. You know, the other thing...
Well, if it's a smaller building, they create more parking. I would just hate to see something that we were somewhat okay on last, at the last meeting where they brought this to our attention, to totally shut it down unless everybody's against it now. I'm just trying to look forward to saving...
Well, the last time, I believe, they had their building right up against the property line, and it was under the power lines.
Yeah, I don't think it was the power lines, it was...
No, last...
The issue was egress to the building and access to it.
Well, that last time, the issue was, one, they were within the side yard setback, and they wanted a, I believe, an eighteen-foot variance instead of three foot, and they were also located in the DTE easement, right, easement. So, so they, they attempted to talk to DTE to have some type of position closer, but the DTE didn't grant them that requirement. So right now, the variance they're requesting is in full compliance with the DTE easement, which I believe is only eight and a half feet from the center line of the pole. But then also, in the future, to address your concerns, Commissioner Richards, that is correct, I mean, if they wanted to have some other proposed configuration that was still within twenty, twenty feet of this east property line, you're correct. 20, uh, 20 feet of this east property line, you're correct, they would have to wait. Uh, if, so that just means any proposal that they may come forward with would have to comply with the 20-foot setback from the road, from east property line. Alternatively, one other option, I, I guess, could be if the applicant asks to, uh, withdraw the, the motions.
Well, he could withdraw it or we could table it.
Either one, yeah. Well, yeah, either one would work, right? I mean, they could table it if that, if that, the same question then is still on the table though.
Yeah. They could table it, but as the board meets as need, you know, there's not really, you know, normally it would be tabled to the next, you know, when they come back.
Yeah.
I have a question about that. We tabled it last time. So it, can that go on in perpetuity or do we have to do something tonight with it because of that or what, what's the issue? Is there a issue?
I don't think, I don't think we did it.
I don't, I don't think, I don't think, I don't think denying it would create a problem because they're going to have to change it in order to correct the other situations.
Well, in other words, we didn't, when we denied this, that denies them getting their, you know, their three-foot variance.
For one year.
They just moved the building up and they can just come back with a new...
They won't need a variance on that property line.
They go to, to a eight unit instead of, or, you know, a six unit instead of a eight unit, now they have parking on the north side or the south side, whatever. I would hate to see them have to wait a year over 30 feet.
They're going to have to put, they have to put the parking behind the building on the east side.
And then that would, that would make them in compliance with the 20-foot setback because the building would be more than 20 feet from that east property line. If there's, if any parking is located between the building and Wendy's, then they're going to be in compliance with that 20-foot side yard setback. Any, any parking configuration.
They won't need a variance on that lot line.
Because they'll be within...
They'll have more than 20 feet.
They'll be within 20.
Yeah, they'll just need a new variance for the west side.
They'll, they'll need a variance for the west side, correct?
Correct.
So if they deny the three foot, that just keeps them from putting the parking lot in the front, they'd have to move the building forward, which automatically wouldn't need a variance because they've been complying.
Okay, I just don't want to see somebody get over 30 feet.
No, then they would just not be able to...
They won't need that.
Move it up and they'd be in compliance and then they could put their building parked behind it and be good for the rest.
Sorry. I'm sorry.
So...
We still need a motion.
I'll make a motion that we deny, uh, I make a motion to deny parcel 35-015-01-0051-001 located at northeast corner of Cherry Hill in our Cola, request variance regarding city zoning ordinance, Apex A schedule regulation R3, multiple family residential minimum size that standard the variance is denied based on pond is only board of appeal, having made determination that the site does not meet the approval criteria, section 154.453A specifically, we find the following criteria have not met. In other words...
And you can say the variance request is self-created.
Yeah, variance is self-created and they could move to, you know, have the parking in the rear and have no variance because it would be within tolerance and it would be more visually accepted for the neighborhood as, and as far as, uh, parking in, uh, in the area. In other words, it would be less traffic compared...
Okay, uh, is there a second?
I second.
Made and seconded, any, uh, comments, questions on the motion? Take your role, please.
Commissioner Price?
Aye.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Martin?
Aye.
Mr. Hickman?
Aye.
Mr. Richard?
Aye.
Chairperson May?
Aye.
Your motion to deny the variance passes six zero.
Okay, the, the next variance request, uh, item C is parking not permitted in the required front yard. Uh, the applicant is proposing a configuration where the off-street parking is located within the 30-foot our Cola Avenue required front yard and is requesting a variance from this standard. Again, a self-created problem. Anyone care to make a motion?
I make a motion to deny parcel number 35-015-01-0051-001 located at the northeast corner of Chill Hill Road and our Cola Avenue, the request variance from the City of Garden City zoning ordinance, section 154.066A 2B parking lot standard. Variance is denied based upon zoning board of appeals, having made the determination that the site does not meet the approval criteria of section 154.453A specifically, find the following criteria, criteria have not been met. Uh, once again, it's a self-created practical difficulty, uh, also, uh, neighborhood character, orderly development, traffic flow.
Okay, motion to deny, is there a second?
I'll second.
Made and seconded, any questions or comments on the motion? Take your role, please.
Commissioner Hickman?
Aye.
Commissioner Richard?
Aye.
Commissioner Martin?
Aye.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Price?
Aye.
Chairperson May?
Aye.
Motion to deny the variance passes six zero.
Next item is D, dumpster not permitted in the front yard. The, uh, applicant is asking for a variance to allow the dumpster to be located in the front, uh, front yard of the structure.
I'm going to make a motion to deny parcel 35-015-01-0051-001 located at the northeast corner of Cherry Hill in our Cola Avenue, request variance of the various city zoning ordinance, section 154.432. The dumpster location requirements, the variance is denied based upon the zoning board of appeals, having made a determination that the site does not meet the approval criteria of section 154.453A specifying, we find the following criteria have not been met, that it is a no. In the view of the residential areas and it should, and we, uh, basically it just looks bad, but I think that, uh, access to, now noise and everything to the neighborhood would be interrupted because it's being in the front of the property and not erected towards the back of the property. And I think it would be more, you know, better when it's hidden than it is viewed.
Okay. Second?
Motion's made and seconded, any comments or questions on the motion? Take your role, please.
Commissioner Price?
Aye.
Commissioner Martin?
Aye.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Hickman?
Aye.
Commissioner Richard?
Aye.
Chairperson May?
Aye.
Your motion to deny passes six zero.
Okay. Four motions have been denied. I think from our discussion, you see there is a way forward if you want to take that. So, uh, we wish you luck in trying to work out these problems, but, um, need to have you generally in compliance with the ordinance. We might consider making small changes in some dimensional setbacks, something like that, but, um, these, uh, items are certainly too major. So, thank you. And thank you to all the residents who came to... Okay, do we have any other business?
Not other yet this time.
Uh, Brian, Jake, any other business?
No, not this time.
Next regular zoning board of appeals meeting is Wednesday, May 22nd. Well, if, if necessary, uh, 2024, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn, second round this summer.
I can't figure the June next year myself.
All in favor, have adjourned?
Aye.
Motion's adjourned, or meeting's adjourned.